Good evening and welcome to Meeting of Planning Commission. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 novel coronavirus and health recommendation from the LA County Health Department, the Planning Commission meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distance requirement, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. The public is encouraged to participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Also, the meeting can be viewed on local cable, Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Also, we're streaming live on www.glandelca.gov. For public comments and your questions during the meeting, you can also call 818-937-8100. City staff will submitting these questions and comments in real time to appropriate person during the Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Charchian.
Here.
Ms. Fuentes.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Minassian.
Here.
And Ms. Shabazian is absent.
Reports regarding posting of agenda. The agenda for July 7, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on June 30, 2021, on the bulletin board outside the City Hall. Any approval of the minutes, approval of the Planning Commission minutes from February 17 and April 7, 2021?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Both will approve and you can sign them after the meeting.
Okay. Oral communications?
Is there anybody on the phone line? Okay, great. None, none this afternoon.
All right. So Board Commission members' comments, do we have any comments?
This could be back in person.
Yeah, yeah. Any old business? We don't have any old business? New business?
Staff would like to suggest that we reorder the agenda items and pull the second item, Item B at 1029 Melrose Avenue, the tentative track map. We would suggest pulling that item to discuss first.
Okay.
Is that fine?
Yes, that's okay.
Great, thank you.
Let's move forward.
Okay, assume you're waiting for my presentation. If you can have my PowerPoint, please up. Good evening, everyone. This is a proposal to subdivide a six-unit multifamily residential building into new condominium units addressed as 1029 Melrose Avenue with tentative track map number 83215. The subject lot is an 8,498 square foot interior lot on the west side of Melrose Avenue with a frontage of 50 feet and a depth of approximately 170 feet. The proposed project consists of 7,198 square foot two-story multifamily residential building, including six townhouse-style units with one level of semi-subterranean parking garage with total of 14 parking spaces, including two, two guest parking spaces and one accessible parking spaces. The project site is located in the R1250, which is high-density residential zone, and the density of the development at six unit is the maximum permitted in this zone. The site is surrounded by high-density multifamily residential zone, and the immediate street block is developed with two to four-story multifamily buildings. The project is compatible with the surrounding buildings, given that the surrounding area is zoned for multifamily residential uses. If we can go to the next slide, please. On October 18, 2016, the Director of Community Development approved design review case number PDR 1611761 with conditions to allow the demolition of the existing residence on the site and construct the subject building. And building permit for this project was issued on August of 2019, and the project is currently under construction as an apartment building. The project with six two-bedroom units includes a common outdoor space area in the rear and private outdoor spaces for each unit. The units are ranging from 967 square feet to 1,420 square feet. This six-unit residential project is consistent with the city's intent of promoting infill residential development in the high-density residential zone with high-density land use designation. The subject development conforms to the city's goal of development in the neighborhood and is consistent with the general plan elements as outlined in the tables in the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves tentative track map number 83215 with condition, which are I think 43 conditions stated in the draft motion attached to the staff report, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any question, am I available for the question?
No question.
No question.
Mr. Chair, am I ready to make the motion?
Yes.
Do we want to hear from the applicant, in case?
I'm sorry.
If you want to open the public portion, so.
Do we have any phone calls to?
Just the applicant is present.
Okay, go, go for it.
Good afternoon, this is Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. I would like to thank the staff for the great job they are doing in these difficult times getting this project move forward to the Planning Commission. I don't have much to say, the only item that I would like to make a comment on it, on the motion, I think there is a typo on page 2, paragraph D, that calls for zoning of R20250, I think that should be corrected to be R1250.
1250.
Yes, and beside that, I'm okay with all the conditions and we will fully comply with those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just for clarification, Mr. Martoroshan, you, there are 41 conditions and two miscellaneous conditions, so I wanted to make sure it's understood, there are like 43 conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I see those 43, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, everything looks good.
Thank you.
You want to make the motion?
Yes, I will. Mr. Chair, I move that upon review and consideration of a tentative track number 83215, and after reviewing the records, files, report, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative track, that tentative track number 83215 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapters 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 43 additional conditions listed below, and the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of fact, A through J, and with that correction on the item number D, with the correction from R-20250 to R-1250, plus 43 conditions.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Roll call? Mr. Charchian.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fuentes.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Hi.
And Mr. Minassian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Project is approved 400.
Sure, the next item on the agenda is the appeal of the administrative use permit, PAUP 2004536, located at 5744 San Fernando Road.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, good afternoon. We're going to do a staff presentation first. I'm assuming this is the applicant?
Yes, I'm the applicant, my name is Alan Vardany.
Okay, we're going to do a staff presentation first, and then the appellant and the applicant can also speak after, after I get to speak, so. All right. Commission, commissioners, ready for my brief presentation?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The second item before you this evening is an appeal of planning hearing officer's approval with conditions of an administrative use permit to allow a medical residential congregate living facility in the IMU-R zone located at 5744 San Fernando Road. The site is approximately 13,500 square feet in area and has frontage on both San Fernando Road and Highland Avenue. The project will convert the existing building from office use to a drug and alcohol rehab center, rehabilitation center. Interior improvements are proposed to the building. This is the location map, the blue highlighted site is the subject site. Immediately to the left of that site is San Fernando Road, and then right above it is Highland Avenue. The administrative use permit to allow medical residential congregate care living in the IMER zone was submitted in March of last year. The planning hearing officer approved the project with conditions in November 2020, and this approval was appealed in December of last year. On the screen right now is the site plan. Parking is located off the alley, which is on the top part of the screen, and the driveway leading to parking underneath the building is also located off the alley. This level also includes some limited administrative offices for the proposed facility in the southern part and the western part of the site. The second floor, which is shown on the screen now, will include dorm-style bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchen and eating facilities, therapy rooms, and employee offices. Couple pictures of the building, the leftmost picture is taken from the corner of Highland and San Fernando. The leftmost picture here is taken from the alley, you can see the parking right off the alley as well as the driveway leading to the parking inside the site. And then the second photo here is an interior shot of the second floor of the building. There are four findings that need to be made in the affirmative to approve an administrative use permit. These findings are, the first one, that the proposed use will be consistent with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. The second, that the use and its associated structures and facilities will not be detrimental to the public health or safety, the general welfare, or the environment. The third, that the, that the use and facility will not adversely affect or conflict with adjacent uses or impede the normal development of surrounding property. And then finally, that adequate public and private facilities, such as utilities, landscaping, parking spaces, and traffic circulation measures are or will be provided for the proposed The planning hearing officer approved the project, making the four required findings in the affirmative, and attaching 19 conditions of approval for this project. The appellant filed an appeal of the, of this approval citing that the planning hearing officer did not hear or consider certain facts before rendering their decision, that the evidence before the officer was insufficient or inadequate to support the decision, and that new evidence not previously presented would change the affirmative decision. More specifically, the appellant cited the following concerns regarding the proposed use. The first one, the project was not compatible with a change of use. The second, the project requires a loading zone and one is not, one is not provided. There were noise concerns, traffic concerns, loitering, parking, security, and field trip concerns, privacy, property values, clientele. Were also cited as, as potential issues. There was some concern about, you know, what would happen if the project was approved and they violated their conditions of approval. And then there was a concern that this project required a, would require a environmental impact report. So, the staff report goes over all these items pretty thoroughly, and I'll just briefly summarize them in my presentation. Regarding the first one, the building code, the applicant contends that the proposed project does not comply with the 2019 California Building Code. Should this project receive approval, the applicant will need to submit plans for the proposed changes to the building for plan check, and during that time, plan checkers will look and make sure that any changes are consistent with the building code, and any changes needed will need to be incorporated into the plans prior to the building receiving a permit, a building permit. The second, a loading zone. The applicant believes that the proposed use requires a loading zone. While the proposed use isn't specifically called out for in our loading zone requirements on our zoning code, it really functions like a non-good handling use, which is really consistent with other similar uses, such as senior living facilities. We've treated senior living facilities as non-good handling uses, and they have not required a loading zone at this specific size, 13,000 square feet. So while the, while the proposal will provide onsite meals, these services are really limited in scope, and therefore, consistent with how we've done in the past, we have, we have not required a loading space. Noise, this facility doesn't include any outdoor gathering spaces, there aren't any operational windows. Noise would be limited to people entering and exiting the site through the parking lot, or pedestrians, you know, walking, walking to the entrances. The project will also need to comply with the city's noise ordinance, similar to all other businesses in the city. Traffic, the appellant cited traffic concerns related to the proposed use. The Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates that the proposed project would generate approximately 146 trips per day, which is about 11% more trips per day than a general office use. The building is currently vacant, so it doesn't generate any traffic, but a general office use would generate approximately 11% less than what the proposed use is, is, would be generating. While the proposed use generates more traffic per day, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, their use that, that is most closely related to the residential congregate living facility isn't in exact parallel, so really, the only traffic generated as a, as a result of this use would be employees of the facility, visitors of patients visiting the facility, occasional deliveries, and then vehicles for field trips. Patients of the facility aren't allowed to, to bring in cars, have cars on the site, they're also not allowed to freely go in and out of the facility at their whim, so that would significantly limit the, you know, amount of traffic that this facility would generate. So given the operation of the facility and the conditions of approval that are proposed to be imposed on it, traffic generated as a result of the proposed project really would be minimized, and staff doesn't believe it, it's a real significant impact. Excuse me. Loitering, as a course of operation, patients of the facility are only outside when they are admitted to or discharged from the facility, and then during organized and chaperoned field trips. So as I mentioned before, they, they can't freely enter and exit the facility. There are also a number of conditions of approval which address the loitering concern, and that was discussed more explicitly in the, in the staff report, I won't go over that. Parking is the next concern. The city's zoning code requires that projects, that the project would provide 14 parking spaces. The site provides 18 code-compliant parking spaces and a total of 36 onsite spaces. Operational considerations of the project do not indicate the facility would, would need any more than the minimum required. Additionally, visitors as a condition of approval are required to schedule their visits, so not every visitor can arrive at the site at the same time, so that also reduces the parking needs of the site. Security, the appellant cited a lack of security as a basis for the appeal and believes that the minimum two onsite security guards proposed is not sufficient. The vast majority of the site is located on the second floor of the existing building, I'll go back a couple slides. This is, the first floor is mostly parking, there are a couple administrative areas, offices on the first floor, but the vast majority of the operation will take place on the second floor of the site. No outdoor spaces are provided, and there are only two access points from, from the second floor to the ground floor, so there are only two exits. There really aren't any accepted standards in terms of the number of security guards per patient, you know, in this type of use, but given the circumstances and given the operation, we think that two security guards at any given time is, is sufficient. Finally, on this page, field trips. The appellant expressed concern with regard to the proposed field trips offered by the facility. According to the applicant, no client will be able to walk in the neighborhood. All field trips are supervised by staff and are pre-arranged. Field trips include Alcoholics and Narcotics Anonymous and Other Recovery-Based Meetings that are located off-site, hikes and walks at various locations, and then weekly recreational or social outings like bowling, or, you know, something, something along those lines. The next set of, of concerns, privacy. The city really has very limited regulations on privacy, and those are really with regard to single-family homes that are going through our design review process, so there really aren't, there really isn't any, any regulation regarding privacy in this situation. Existing windows that are located on the alley or the single-family facing side of the building are really administrative offices and therapy rooms, so let me, let me go back The second floor, the upper part of the page, that side of the building will face the alley The second floor, the upper part of the page, that side of the building will face the alley and the residential uses and everything on that side of the building is either an administrative office or a therapy room. The dormitory star building, or the dormitory style bedrooms either face west towards San Fernando Road or they're located within the interior of the building. Property values. Staff really can't speak to any perceived decrease in property value as a result of the project, but we acknowledge that single-family homes are in proximity or residential uses are in proximity to this facility. The zoning of this site, of the subject site, IMUR, has been the same for approximately seventeen years. So this site has been zoned IMUR for about seventeen years. This zone permits a variety of uses with a variety of operational characteristics. And I go over that more in the staff report. Also, while this site is currently developed with a two-story building, buildings, building height up to six stories and seventy-five feet is permitted on this site. So there are a range of different uses that could be accommodated on this site and there are, you know, the, the, sort of the development density of this site is on the lower end of what could be developed. Clientele. Potential clientele of the medical residential congregate care living will not be limited to those living within the surrounding neighborhood or the city. So according to the applicant, the operation imposes no residency restrictions and admits patients from throughout the country. So it's not limited to neighborhood residents or City of Glendale residents. It's really countrywide throughout the United States that clients are admitted. There was concern that what happens if this facility is approved, but they violate one of the conditions of approval? What happens there is violations will be handled consistent with the policies that are in place when the violation is identified. So currently, if the, if the facility was in operation and someone called in a, you know, a noise complaint or some other violation of the conditions of approval, someone from our neighborhood services division would go out and, you know, speak with the, the administrator there, see if in fact there was a violation taking place. If they didn't rectify that violation, eventually they would get cited and eventually they'd get taken to court and event Nukian would have to deal with them. So that's what would take place at this point. But any violation, a rectification of any violation would just be dealt with like any other, any other problem we have in the city. And finally, CEQA. The applicant contends that the proposed project requires an environmental impact report because the building is undergoing significant changes to its interior and mechanical equipment, or will be, I should say, will be going through changes. The project is exempt from CEQA as a Class One existing facilities exemption. This exemption allows additions to existing structures provided that the addition will not result in an increase of more than fifty percent of floor area or twenty-five-hundred square feet of floor area, whichever's less. As I mentioned before, there is no expansion proposed for this building as a result of the project. They're just reconfiguring the interior of the existing space. A couple, one more, one more thing before I conclude my presentation. We have received a couple of emails recently regarding the project. Both expressed some concern. I can summarize them if you'd like, but they were not in support of this project. These were received in the last day or two. Also, prior to the appeal, during the decision-making process, staff received a number, a number of emails from, from nearby residents. The vast majority of those were in opposition to the project, but there were a significant minority that were supportive of the project. And I would estimate that during that part of this project's processing, there were about two hundred, two hundred emails. But so far during the appeal, I've received a couple. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending that the planning commission sustain the planning hearing officer's approval of the project with conditions based on the rationale contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have questions. I know you mentioned that this was kind of compared to senior assisted living medical congregate facility. This is a rehab center and I guess I am kind of, I want to hear from you as to how you, you know, came to that, that versus, you know, grouping into the institutional group of the medical care facility that has detoxification and, and also I think hospitals, nursing homes, and so on. So if, let's say, I, I know where you went with this administrative procedure here, but if let's say this was considered as a institutional group of medical care, what procedure will need to be taken? Is it CUP? Is it change use variance? That's just a question that I have.
You know what? I didn't bring my, my zoning book here. I apologize. If you want to put that question on hold, I can find that information out.
Yes, please.
You're not, you're not, you're looking at it from a, okay, which use is a CUP? Which use is an AUP? Not, not necessarily the, the loading zone part of it?
Well, I mean, that I think kind of is associated with that is to how you, you know, approached this project. So obviously if this is a office use, hotel use type of thing, then, you know, your report is, you know, valid and, you know, verified. But if it's hospitals or any other institutional type of thing, then, then it will trigger that. So I think in a way, you know, apply. So that's why I kind of wanted to find out or pick your brain as to, you know, you went this direction and there's, you know, I want to make sure that there's no stones unturned. So which is, if this is alcohol rehab center, is this a, you know, detox center? This is a medical facility versus a regular senior living assistance hotel or medical office type of use?
It is a, it's a medical, the specific use is a drug and alcohol rehab, rehabilitation facility. We have classified that as a medical residential congregate.
Oh, you do?
Living, yes. That's, there isn't a specific use in our zoning code that is drug and alcohol rehabilitation center.
Okay.
That, that use, that use doesn't exist in our zoning code. It's classified under.
Is it just a practice or is it written somewhere that kind of spells it out? So then maybe this appellant, you know, if that was in our, you know, spelled out, then, you know, he might not have had this type of issues.
Well, the medical residential congregate living facility, there's a definition in our code and the proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation center fits in with that definition. So that's how we, that's how we tied the two.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you for the explanation. And, you know, going back, if it was categorized as a dealer, then what procedure do we take to, to address this, this project? You know, that is whether to go down the CUP route or any other route?
Right. That's, this type of use, the medical residential congregate care requires approval of an administrative use permit in the IMUR zone. I suspect that the similar senior living or non-medical would require the same thing or, or a lesser approval. I would need to look to be sure and I apologize. I just, I didn't bring my zoning book.
That ends my question.
I have a few questions. As far as the condition violations, is there any possibility to get more specifics in terms of what would trigger? I understand what would trigger non-compliance, but it's a bit vague. It says at a certain point, if compliance is not reached, then the public hearing is scheduled. It, it also says that, you know, whenever there is an issue, there's a notice to be sent with an extended period of time given to remedy the issue, but both are kind of left a little bit vague. I'm just curious, is it like, there's three, three times it could happen after which it comes to hearing or it's not really designated?
It's not really designated. A lot of the code compliance issues are, you know, if, if the applicant who has the violation is, is working with us to rectify the, the situation, we will continue working with them until they become not cooperative. And so, you know, in, in certain instances, a violation may be taken care of, be able to be taken care of very quickly. Other ones may be not so quickly. So that's why, you know, it's vague because it's really dependent on the situation.
Okay.
I can address that in more detail if you'd like, members of the planning commission, Chairman Austin. So the code enforcement department will, as Mr. Kiesel mentioned, work with the violator. However, there is quite a bit of lead-up to investigate a violation, to document it. They do send out a notice of violation if they find a violation. They do give the violator, potential violator thirty days usually to remedy the violation. If that's not remedied, sometimes they will issue administrative citations to the violator if they do find a violation. And eventually if it's not corrected, and depending on the severity of the violation, in this case, it's possible that we would schedule a hearing to revoke the administrative use permit. And that would, that would, I think, is the notice being referenced in the staff report.
Okay. But it's still, I guess it depends on the severity of the violation and how quickly they remedy it before it could come to this point.
That's correct. As an example, several years back, there was a banquet hall that was violating some conditions and it took about six months to a year administratively to try to bring them to compliance. And then it was referred over to the city attorney's office for legal action and, and several months after that, there was a hearing scheduled. Now, if it's very, if it's very severe, then, you know, that timeframe can be shortened and also depending on, nowadays, actually, they're, they're much quicker. The, the timelines have been shortened because of administrative citations. People tend to correct these violations more quickly once they are issued a citation and there's a monetary fine associated.
Okay, understood. And I guess my only other question is, are there any precedent projects in any of the tri-cities that staff came across when reviewing this case? And if so, did any of those have any issues after the fact in any neighboring areas? More, my concern is more so on these potential violations and nuisances in the area occurring. And I would just be curious if there was anything that came up in staff's research.
I believe I did look at one in North Glendale, the La Crecena area. But in all honesty, I don't know that we have any other facilities similar to this in, in Glendale. And I don't believe they had any open code enforcement issues or any, or any previous code enforcement issues that had been rectified. I didn't, I don't think I checked Pasadena-Burbank area. The, the operator of, of this facility, if it gets approved, also runs one or two other facilities. That might also be a question that you, you could ask him. He's got some experience in running drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Commissioner Fontas, any questions?
My question here is, this is a fifty-six bed. That means on every given day, it could be fifty-six patients in there. Do they have any limit of the number of visitors during the day? I mean, if there's fifty-six and every one of them have one or two visitors at the same time, two security guards not going to do it. You know, that's, I know there's no such written law on how many security guards we have to have, but fifty-six beds, fifty, fifty-six persons and, you know, if they have, each have one or two visitors at the same time, that place is going to be really crowded. And we have schools close by, so security is really an issue for me and.
There, there is a condition of approval, and I'm trying to find the exact language, that limits, that limits visitors, I think from nine to five. And also they need to be pre-arranged, they need to be pre-scheduled.
Because my question is if they can limit, and let's say if they have a full house, they can have fifty-six visitors at the same time. So if in one hour, they have like two or three people, just a matter of controlling the crowd?
Sure. Let me, let me see if I can get that exact language.
It's, it's on page six of the staff report. It's, it's fifteen, no more than fifteen.
Oh, more than fifteen, okay. So I must have skipped it.
And it's eight to five.
Yeah, I saw the hours, but I didn't see how many people. Okay. And also, they are changing the, the, the interior to comply with the medical zone. So whatever the medical building requirements are, they are going to convert the interior to match with the current zoning, yes?
Well, what they would be proposing to do is convert the interior of the building to, you know, fit, fit their needs as a drug and alcohol rehab center. And that proposal would need to comply with the changes that, that requires, would need to comply with the city's building codes.
Okay. Earlier you mentioned that the city's building code, it, it, it falls on the medical. So if the medical is more strict for the conversion, are they going to do the, whatever the medical code requires? Like the fireproofing and?
Yeah, they will, they will need to do whatever the building code requires based on what they're proposing to do, the changes they're proposing to make, and, and the proposed use that's going in there.
I understand. Okay. No more questions? Any other questions?
I have questions for the appellant later on. I mean applicant, not appelle.
So we do have the appellant. The appellant should likely go first and then also the applicant is on the line.
Do we have any people holding for us on, on phones?
We have four people, Eric. There are four callers at this point, plus whoever is, is on the screen.
So you want to answer the phones or you want to go with the applicant?
Let's do the, the applicant and the appellant first. Let's do the, the, um, applicant and the appellant first.
Alright.
Who is, I'm sorry, who is the appellant? I've talked to you on the phone. Okay. Can you please introduce yourself and then, uh, you've got fifteen minutes to speak?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hamlet Zatogin. Uh, born and resident in Glendale, California. I've been a resident for twenty-six years. Uh, been living on Dale Avenue, which is adjacent to this building, uh, for about seventeen years now. Uh, I'm a local certified public accountant and also a California licensed realtor. Um, I am the appellant, uh, kind of voicing the concerns, um, for a majority of the neighbors and the neighborhood in general. Um, so I kind of heard the staff's report. I read it. Um, in my opinion, it's, it's a bit favorable, um, to the applicant. And they still didn't, I feel like they still didn't address a lot of the concerns all the way, uh, like we wanted to. So the summary of appellate's discussion, the three points, those are, still are three main points, um, which are the big points. Uh, we still, we still believe that for the building code, uh, and like you guys kind of just, uh, briefly talked about as far as, you know, medical residential congregate, what does that fall into? How are we gonna decide? Um, you mentioned that, you know, it's not written anywhere in the code, so we're kind of fitting it in somewhere. Um, so we, we, you know, we urge you guys, we're urging, you know, everyone to, um, you know, get more information on this. And if it's not clear, if it's not, if it's not really clear and written anywhere, um, then, you know, we might, you know, maybe it's a good idea if we get the environmental report because, uh, as far as a lot of these concerns go, um, a lot of it can be, you know, identified and we can get more information on it with an environmental report. Uh, as far as the change of use, there are gonna be major interior changes. So, you know, we're happy that's conditioned to this and that they would have to, you know, uh, comply with all of the building and safety codes and go through all the checks and all of that, uh, which is standard. It's, it's nothing surprising, but, uh, that's one good thing for us to hear. Um, you know, the loading zone, uh, we still think that's an issue. Uh, you know, if, you know, they're men, the applicants, the applicant is mentioning that, you know, uh, the patients or clients, um, are not allowed to come to the site themselves. They have to be dropped off. Um, or they have to get picked up from somewhere and brought there, so on and so forth. Uh, but a loading zone, you know, in the front, which would be on Highland, Highland Avenue. Um, you know, not only for the clients, also, you know, for ambulance and emergency situations. Um, the alley itself that leads to the parking lot, you, you can't really drop off there. Um, there's already a ton of traffic there. As I mentioned, I've been living there for seventeen years. Um, my garage is, is right on the alleyway. Um, there is usually a bunch of traffic there already with the car wash behind there. Um, so there's no way to really make a loading zone there or dropping off patients in general. Um, you know, two cars can hardly pass by and the alley is too small for two cars to even pass by next to each other without one really stopping and pulling over a little to the left or the right. Um, so the loading zone is, is still a big concern for us. Um, next, you know, as far as, as far as the noise go, as far as the noise goes, um, there, there is already a lot of noise. I understand it's a commercial zone. We have the car wash. We have the gas station. The San Fernando itself, of course, there's a train. Uh, there, there's always gonna be noise wherever you live. Um, and as far as, again, the noise goes, uh, this is more related for, for us, the noise is more related to the traffic. Um, a lot of cars, a lot more cars are gonna be moving in and out of there, especially employees. I know they're gonna come park there in the morning, but you know, there's gonna be a lot more car traffic, um, on Highland itself, pulling into the alley and then pulling into the parking. Uh, and again, already with the car wash there, um, there's gonna be a lot more noise and traffic. Um, loitering, uh, loitering, security guards, you guys mentioned security guards. I'll get to security in a little bit, but, uh, as far as, as far as loitering goes, it's, it's an alley. There, there is always loitering in an alley, especially with the car wash. And now we're adding in, you know, a fifty-six bed facility, like you said, uh, not counting even the employees, uh, or the visitors. You have fifty-six people, uh, on the site on any given day. Uh, and they're not allowed to, you know, step outside, but, uh, a lot of times, you know, when, when they're released, um, there could be a lot of loitering issues there, whether it's in the alley or at the gas station. Um, the adjacent, uh, residential neighborhoods, um, which is our main concern. Um, and there's no way to really, I, I think, uh, control like walk-in patients or when they're released. I don't think there's a way to really control that. Um, who's like, who is, is there gonna be someone designated from the city to be standing there and making sure that the facility are, is following these rules? It's gonna be hard for me as a resident. Um, and of course, you know, the people running it, the employees, they're gonna be inside as well. It's gonna be a little hard to control uh, loitering, loitering on that end. Um, parking, there is a lot of parking spaces there. Um, you know, I don't have an environmental report or evidence of parking issues in the neighborhood, but, with my experience, again, seventeen years living in the neighborhood, um, not only myself, but a lot of the neighbors, uh, especially on Dale Avenue, um, there's always been parking issues. Um, you know, from the car wash, uh, a few years ago, when there were offices in this building, five seven four four, there were offices and there were a lot of employees parking on our street. Uh, you know, there's a lot of parking there, so I'd get surprised why they're parking on the street, but you know, at, at the end of the day, they would still come park and, and leave later in the afternoon. So there's just not enough parking there, especially on San Fernando. Um, you know, the car wash workers take up San Fernando and then everyone else will, you know, come into the neighborhoods and park in the neighborhoods. Um, the next one we had was security. Um, two people is definitely not enough for security, uh, for fifty-six patients. Um, you know, in our report, I think we mentioned that they, they have to take breaks as well. So then we're leaving, I guess, one security at some times during the day, we're leaving only one security with fifty-six people. Um, which is, which is just not enough for sure as far as security. Um, the buildings, excuse me, uh, field trips, field trips were next. Um, we again voiced our concerns, um, for the patients and the clients. Um, we just think like, uh, as far as field trips goes, these people, um, they're here to get treatment and I think they're gonna need a lot more fresh air than they can get. Um, this facility doesn't have anywhere where they can, you know, leave. It's, it's like no, no windows. If they step outside, they're literally on Highland Avenue. And I don't think they're gonna be going to the parking, uh, of the structure to, you know, do exercise or get fresh air. So field trips was definitely a concern for us. If they're gonna be coming out of the facility to walk around, uh, are they allowed to walk in the neighborhood? Are they allowed to walk through the neighborhood? Um, so those are definitely concerns that weren't really mentioned. I mean, uh, staff is saying bowling movies, uh, all this stuff, which is fine, but, you know, if, if they're getting treatment, I don't think they're gonna be able to leave every day. And, you know, I guess, I guess that's up to, I guess, that's up to the people running the facility. You know, I don't know everything about running a facility like this, but, uh, from my understanding, uh, and like the staff mentioned, the applicant does have other facilities that, uh, he has experience with. Um, I believe they're residential. Uh, you, you know, you have a backyard if it's residential, for example, where, you know, clients and patients can step out and get some fresh air, you know, on, on a daily basis, um, during their treatment. Um, privacy, uh, looks like there's not a, there's not a lot of regulations in regards to privacy. Um, main concern, you know, for us in the neighborhood, privacy is huge. Um, I guess for me in general, because, uh, the facility's windows, uh, adjacent to the neighborhood is facing directly in my backyard. Um, and it's a few homes that's the case like this. Maybe somebody a block away is not voicing this concern as much as me. Uh, but for me, definitely, uh, privacy is a huge deal. I know it's therapy rooms and the group rooms. Um, but it's not, you know, twenty, if it's open twenty-four hours, these people are in there twenty-four hours. You know, at any time, they're gonna be able to, you know, uh, be on the second floor, maybe not in the therapy room, but I'm sure they can go in and out. Uh, so that privacy, uh, for us is huge. Uh, maybe, you know, if there's a way, just, uh, maybe if they can't see outside from the inside, um, that's a possibility, but, uh, privacy is, is huge for me, you know, living, living adjacent to this facility. Uh, that's, that's, that's a huge issue for me. Um, property values, um, you know, that, that one is, it's, it's one to mention, but, you know, as far as the zoning goes, if, if it's, if they're allowed to build it, then it is what it is. Um, you know, property values will definitely, you know, it'll take a toll on the neighborhood directly, especially adjacent neighborhood. Uh, maybe not a few blocks down, but, you know, the, the adjacent neighborhood is definitely gonna lose its value and, and interest, uh, down the line. The clientele, um, you know, it's all, it's open to everybody. Uh, but I think, you know, being, being in the area it is, uh, and not a lot of facilities like this. You know, the facility being proposed fifty-six beds, not a lot of facilities like this, um, nearby. So it's, it's definitely gonna attract a lot of nearby too. Um, you know, is there, is there good reports? Is there good research or statistics that shows, uh, the need for it in the area? Um, you know, we would like more information on that. Um, condition violations. That was a, that was another big one because, you know, it's, it's, I didn't see, we didn't really see the rules, rules for that one really stated well. Um, you know, how many violations is it gonna take for it to get serious? How much are the fines gonna be? How many fines is it gonna take, you know, for, for an additional step to be taken? Um, you know, this one, this one, this one's a big one for us, uh, just for that reason because, you know, again, all of, all of the, all of the points, you know, that we mentioned, you know, parking, security, loitering, um, you know, noise, um, so, you know, if, if, if it goes through, you know, who's, who's gonna, you know, take responsibility of this? Um, like I said, you know, it's, it's not gonna be, it shouldn't be our job as the, you know, residents to be calling every week uh, and voicing our concerns that there is a violation or there's a potential violation. Uh, you know, it's gonna be hard for us to prove that as well. And as you guys mentioned, it takes time. So, you know, maybe there should be someone designated, um, to, to kind of keep track of this stuff. Uh, uh, and, you know, follow, follow, follow up on our concerns, uh, if there's violations. Um, and the last thing, the, the CEQA, um, again, we still strongly believe that there should be an environmental report. Um, I know there's no increase of more than fifty percent of the floor area, like you mentioned. Um, but, you know, with, with, with all of these concerns and the change in use, um, you know, an environmental report would definitely, you know, help address a lot of these concerns and get a better idea if this facility is right for this area. Um, it would probably, you know, make a lot of residents, uh, feel a lot better as well if they get more information. Um, cause right now there's a lot of gray areas, um, you know, starting from the very first point as far as the building code goes. Um, and the, and the class, there, there's, there's gray areas, um, that, and a lot of things just aren't being addressed thoroughly. Um, and, and, and there definitely needs to be more research, um, as, you know, as far as these points go. I don't, I don't, I don't really have anything else prepared to speak about. I just wanted to summarize and voice our concerns um, from the neighbors, neighborhood and city in general. Um, I know there was a lot of emails. We did our best to contact, uh, the city councils, uh, which I'm, you know, hoping we don't have to keep going. Um, but, but that's it for me. Um, if, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any questions of the appellant?
I don't.
I, I personally think we should hear from both sides first, but.
Mr. Verdani? Hi, Mr. Verdani?
Yes.
Hi. Yes, you, uh, you have, uh, do you wanna give him five minutes to s- make his presentation?
Yes.
Okay. You have five minutes. Thanks.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, everyone, uh, for being here and discussing this project. Um, I do understand, uh, some of the concerns that the neighbors have. Uh, just wanna kind of give you a little bit background on me. Uh, I'm also have been resident of Glendale for fifteen years. I'm an immigrant from Armenia, just like a lot of us in Glendale. Um, I also hold a real estate broker license, just, just for the record. Um, just wanted to kind of, uh, give you guys a background of how I got into this industry. I have been seeing a lot of friends, family members getting addicted to drugs and alcohol. And I'm sure it's not a secret that it's an epidemic right now. And, uh, I got into this business about five years ago. Uh, we have three residential facilities, which my staff, uh, is, my directors are also present at these meetings and, um, they are ex-drug themselves. They're recovering drug addicts. Um, and we have three six-bed facilities, which is, which does not require, uh, an approval from the city like this one. It's easy to go open one. You just have to apply for state, the Department of Healthcare license. Uh, apply, get the house and you're approved for six-bed facility. Uh, why did I, uh, decided to go try to open this project? It's, uh, first of all, uh, there have been a lot of disappointing comments on social media that I've seen, uh, quite frankly, I was ve- very, uh, bothered by it. Um, why we're here today, let's just, uh, call things by their names. We're not here for the environment. We're not here for things, you know, like, uh, cars, traffic. I think the main reason, I'm, I'm not, and I'm not pointing finger at anybody, but I think the main reason is that the society likes to label drug addicts and alcoholics as, you know, bad members of society. And I understand why, and I agree because I agree to some point when they're actively using, they're committing crimes, theft, they, they are aggressive. Um, I'm sure you guys will agree, we have a lot of overdoses in hospitals. Pandemic actually fueled it. So why this project? Uh, six-bed facilities that we have unfortunately have a lot of overhead. So meaning, uh, we have to have a lot of staff, a lot of expenses are overhead. Uh, and for people that have Medi-Cal, they're not able to get help to come to our facility because Medi-Cal pays much less than people that have money will willing to pay for their insurance, uh, treatment or a regular PPO insurance will pay. So Medi-Cal, people who have Medi-Cal under Affordable Care Act, just wanna mention that, uh, alcohol and drug abuse is recognized as as a disease. It's recognized disease under Affordable Care Act. So every insurance that parent have, um, they must cover the child under twenty-six years old if they have any kind of substance and alcohol abuse problem. The problem we have is that we get so many phone calls every single day, people crying on the phone. They desperately need help. They understand they're been drinking or they're lost a loved one or prescribed pain medications. And these people deserve to live. They, these people need help. And with Medi-Cal, there's unfortunately few facilities in Los Angeles that will take them and there's a long waiting list. Um, I'm just gonna generally address some of the sections that we have.
Can I interrupt for one second? You've got about a minute left unless the chair wants to give you more time.
Um, I, I'll, I'll try to be brief. I don't wanna go through every single, um, problem that, uh, appellant has, has mentioned. I can go over them, but it'll take me more time. But just, just in general, I wanna see, say something. Um, these people that are desperately need help, they need us, they need somebody to do something to open up a facility like this one. And these people, every single condition that you guys addressed will be, uh, taken care of and will be, um, appropriately dealt with. The security, all these things are not issued, but just kind of wanted to. Appropriately dealt with, the security, all these things are not issue, but just kind of wanted to mention that gas stations, liquor stores. Nightclubs, even the banquet halls, even though uh like, you know, there's, there's places that. People think drug addicts are, you know, they're getting attracted to, they're, it's a, it's a rehab center, but it's not a rehab center. When, when they come to rehab center, people are uh happy to get help, they're desperately need help. They're gonna be very thankful and they're probably, nah, most of them will, I hope they'll get their life back. And uh, but the other thing I wanna mention is that uh we will be. On hospitals, jails, DUI, theft, everything will go down as facilities like this treat people. Because people are trying to, they're not, uh, they're committing crimes because they can't afford to buy alcohol or drugs anymore. Because they lost their lives uh to, to, to the addiction. I mean, this is kind of includes my presentation, uh, if, if you guys have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer, my staff is here. They can talk. Rehab centers, this one changed their lives, they've been sober for, sober for several years, they've.
Okay, I need to cut you off right now, we're running out of time, sir, Commissioner Lee has a question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Verdanyan, um, I have a few questions. And one of them uh has to do with um, you mentioned that you are currently running three facilities. So I want to know where uh is located, uh how many beds are in each facilities? And the size of the staff. And how long, I think you mentioned that you're uh were in this business for about three years. So I kinda like to hear a little bit more about that from you, uh of uh your background in the, in this business. Because I, I wanna compare that to your proposal of a fifty-six beds, if you only have five clientele in each facility. Then this is a different scale uh operation that you're proposing here. And the second question to you is the um, the appellant uh mentioned uh about the loading zone. And I'm looking at your um uh facility schematics here. And yeah, it is a narrow alleyway, uh it's only twenty feet, uh very busy. Where are you proposing to load and unload uh the patients, is it off of Highland Avenue? Have you worked with the city to make that into a uh loading zone, unloading zone? So I guess the city also staff can answer that. But definitely, I don't think uh as um the appellant uh indicated that if you're trying to use the alley as uh that purpose. I don't think that'll work out, um and I'm, I'm not fond of uh, of uh, of that proposal. And one of the question uh that um also arise was the clientele. And in the statement here that um you are open to and you, you know, don't impose any residence requirements. But as you said, uh if Glendale, so if Glendale has um, uh, you know, similar issues. Are you giving uh priority to Glendaleans? So those are my three questions.
Thank you, sir, good questions, uh, on the first one. Well, one, we have three facilities, one actually is located in Locker Center, right on the border of Glendale and Tahanga. Next one is located in Van Nuys, and one located in Sherman Oaks, these are six-bed facilities. And we have about ten, uh eight to ten staff each, probably total about twenty to twenty-five. We have uh first facility is about five years old, the other one is about three years old. And the last one is about one years old. As far as the, my background, um, I am uh, I am not in recovery myself. I'm not a therapist, neither I am uh a director of one, any of the facilities, I'm uh, I'm more on this, I'm the CEO. So I'm on the business side of it. I do have these wonderful people that are actually here with us today, uh they are more qualified to treat people than I am. And as far as the fifty-six bed facility will go. Is that uh I have quiet, very, very interesting uh applications. For the future already, uh for really qualified people in the industry that have run this kind of facilities. Name, I can name some of them, Parzana Treatment Center, uh Impact in Pasadena, they have a huge facility that saves people's lives. All day long. As far as the. The loading zone goes, uh that building has a, a gate from the alley. That gate leads to the parking lot already inside the building and enters to the elevator and the stairs. So I'm proposing, which is probably the best thing to do. Either people. If, if a family member usually brings the client, they can be dropped off inside the building already inside our parking lot. After the gate is open and closes. As far as the concerns, as for the noise, I mean, eh, I just wanna mention this. I have been so many times at the site, right now, we have homeless people loitering there. And every time I've been there, there were a couple of homeless people by the car wash. I don't understand how this was not a concern of the neighbors. First, uh, second of all. The, the way that we, our intake process works, we ca- we get contacted by a phone. By someone who needs now help or their family, and then there goes a long pre-assessment process of the patient. We ask so many questions, how their health is, how much they're using, what kind of drugs, is, is, is it alcohol or? There's all kinds of questions, this, this designed for the safety of the patient and safety of objects, so that when the patient is admitted. They don't come and collapse or overdose or uh none of that happens, so if the, if the patient's answers. Yeah, are suitable for our program, then we arrange a pickup and drop off. Most of the time, we send a staff member with our own car to bring the client in. I hope that answers the loading zone question. As far as the clientele, I have proposed this before and I will. And I will keep my promise and you guys can put that in a condition also. I will allow five scholarships from City of Glendale residents if they prove the city, city residency. And they have no Medi-Cal, no, no means to pay for their treatment. We will give this, this way back to the society, back to the city. As far as anyone that has a problem, we'll treat them for thirty days. We can do five scholarships a month for, for Glendale City residents.
Uh, Mr. Verdanyan, I have a follow-up question, uh, you mentioned that you have three facilities with six beds in La Crocena. Six beds in Van Nuys and six ba- beds in Sherman Oaks, and you mentioned that you have eight. Uh, staff members in each facility, as you said, something like twenty-five people working for you. And then now this proposal, you have fifty-six beds, and then you're proposing eight to ten staff, so some, somehow. In my head, the math doesn't work out, so, so can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
So eight to ten staff means at any given time during the day. There's probably going to eight, be eight to ten staff present at that moment. But imagine uh you can't work people twenty-four hours a day, there's gonna be probably three shifts. So I'm estimating there's gonna be, I don't know, somewhere to thirty to five to forty-five employees. But the beauty on having fifty-six clients on the one roof is that you can bring your costs down. By having less staff than you would have in different locations, so these houses, these is better in different locations, so. I ha- we have to hire different staff members to supervise clients, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Chair has uh, you know, made this, brought this question before about the security. And not only the security of the area of the, of the surrounding neighborhoods, but also if you are treating. So this is rehab center, uh, the drug. And alcohol rehab, you know, I, you know, have you run into the, you know, um. Instances where it compromises security, and how did you deal with that?
So, if you guys allow me, uh since we have the, our directors here, would you allow me to have. The directors who are more present at the facility answer this question, is, would that be okay? I mean, I can answer it, I, I, what I would want to them answer because they're more hands-on, on day-to-day operations. If it's up to you, if you allow me, or I can answer.
Yes, you may, yeah, you wanna get a correct answer, so you're here, might as well.
You've been with us for four, five years almost, uh, if you can give us a scenario on that.
Sure, yeah, um, good evening, everybody, thanks for your time, um, I, I definitely mirror what Alan was um saying. I, you know, can value and understand the concerns brought forth today. I think there's a, there's a couple things to note that's important when deciding or determining rather the security of a facility. The security guards that we are proposing are for the surrounding area. But it's also important to denote that at any particular time, there are support staff technicians, there's medication staff, there's counselors and therapists. Those are the staff members that Alan was referring to on a particular shift, monitoring the clients, thirty-minute rounds, observing respirations. Checking on them, in instances where people display non-compliance with the program. Or they are a security threat or risk, they're safely removed from the facility. And I think, you know, as we're having this conversation tonight, we're discussing, um, you know, what we can do as a facility. But it's also important to note that we as a facility are licensed through the Department of Healthcare Services, which carries its own set of regulations. To hold us accountable, to keep patients safe, to keep communities safe. In addition to that, we also will be seeking accreditation from the Joint Commission, which is a national governing body that accredits hospitals. Um, and other behavioral health facilities, which a- again is, is specifically designed around client and community safety. These are thirteen hundred applicable standards from everything to um chirping alarms that notify us when doors are opened. And staff members aren't present, um, to, you know, rounds and fire safety equipment, to emergency discharge planning. Meaning we wouldn't ever discharge a patient to the streets of the community, but we would have a pre-designated area, be it. Glendale Adventist Hospital Emergency Room or other areas like that to make sure that the client is still safe. When you take all of those things into consideration, I think that we very rarely run into an issue in which. You know, the safety or integrity of the community has been jeopardized, you know, our, our other locations or residential homes. Within a residential community, and you know, what we've come to see is the neighbors sort of rally in support of us. Because, again, twenty-four-seven staffed, video surveillance, audio surveillance. Maintaining a, an authority figure throughout the community to help, you know. I can think of one instance where we had a vandal who was vandalizing vehicles, and it was our camera system that was able to, to lead that person, you know, into captivity. And that individual was not, had nothing to do with our program, but we were able to contribute and give back to the community in that respect. So, uh, you know, again, with, with, um, you know, uh. Not to um diminish the concerns because they are valid and, and we can completely respect and understand that. But uh, you know, again, with, with DHCS licensure, um, we're held to a very high standard in regard to keeping the facility secure.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I have one question, what's your average length of stay per patient, just so we can kinda get an understanding of how often loading would occur?
Twenty-eight days.
Twenty-eight days. And in the case of staff, uh, I guess this is more directed to staff, as far as traffic goes, you guys put in the staff report that you project a hundred forty-six trips per day. Is that factoring in that there would be three shifts for employees and probably a total of thirty individuals visiting the site? Or is that under the assumption that it's just the average of eight to ten overall?
That number was taken from. The Institute of Transportation Engineers. And um what they do is they survey. Different sorts of uses and. Then gauge the number of per, trips per day versus, uh, by those surveys. So, in this case, um, the ITE didn't have a specific drug and alcohol rehab use. It had something similar, and it's a, it's a per-day use, so I don't, I don't know whether they base it on. The size of the center, the number of patients, the, the, the number of employees. But. The hundred and forty-six trips per day is, is a per-day thing, it's not a, a shift. Or a, um, you know, day-night time thing, it's, it's.
Right, I was just wondering if what um the applicant mentioned as far as how many staff members would actually be on site, if that factored it in. Or if it's more just a general use-based thing with that, which I think you answered.
I, I think it's a general use-based thing.
Okay, I don't have any more questions at this time.
You have any public phone, phone calls?
All questions answered, okay. Okay, five callers.
Five callers.
Thanks.
Okay, so, I'm gonna put them on air. Hello, and I'm sorry if I butcher your name, Jolene Taylor, you're on the air and you have two minutes?
Two minutes.
Starting.
Okay, good evening Commissioners and members of staff, my name is Jolene Taylor and I've lived in this neighborhood for over forty years. We're a close-knit family area with a good number of children living here. Uh, we should watch out for one another and the result has made us one of the safest neighborhoods in Glendale. This proposed project would literally be separated from homes only by the width of the alley. It is simply not compatible with our neighborhood. It was mentioned that there were other businesses in the area, but I'd like to point out, those are not twenty-four hours a day. In this site, there used to be a jewelry store, but again, it was limited from nine to five. Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for your comments and questions, it seems that there were some vague responses that have not been properly addressed. And I hope you're as concerned as I am at the lengthy amount of time given to correct potential violations, well over a year in this cited case. In addition, there's a huge difference between a six-bed facility and a fifty-six bed facility with thirty-five to forty-five employees. I don't need to reiterate all the well-thought-out arguments made in the appeal, if you only consider the lack of compatibility. And two proposed security guards required to protect homes less than twenty feet away. You should deny this project and protect the quality of life for Glendale residents, thank you.
Hello, William Riley, you are on the air and you have two minutes starting now.
Hi, I, I'm William Riley, I am um a resident in Glendale since April fifteenth nineteen ninety-six. I've been clean and sober for thirty-five years, I got clean and sober in Glendale. And uh, I, I wholly support this uh, this um venture because. A lot of times, people just don't understand the drug addicts and the alcoholics, and uh, they want them to get clean and sober, but maybe out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean. Or the desert or something like that, but not in their backyard. I had a, a neighbor of mine come to me with that petition that, that got this um meeting started today, saying, can you believe they wanna do that? You know what kind of people they are? I said, yeah, you've been living next to one for twenty years. It's just, it's, it's amazing that the ignorance that people show about um what they know and what they don't know. I've been a drug and alcohol counselor for over ten years, I wouldn't cause any problem parking in that facility, I'd just walk to it if I worked there. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Marlo Cortez, you are on the air and you have two minutes starting now.
Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Marlo Cortez, uh, I am, I'm living, I lived in Glendale for fifteen years. I'm an architect and uh I would like to thank the, the commission, the commission for giving us. I am not opposed to the type of facility, I, I, I'm okay with, with helping uh drug addiction. But the question is, is this existing structure the right place to build this kind of, this type of facility? the right place to build this kind of, this type of facility? That's why I'm questioning. In the building code, it says here, the building code does not allow this type of construction, which is type 5B, for a medical facility. That's my, it's a fundamental requirement which should have been addressed before they apply it, not, not when you approve the change of use, then you will correct the problem. Should be corrected before you apply it. That's my first point. Second point is, nobody addressed my concern about the ambulance and the emergency coming in here. This is a medical facility. There will be, there will be regular instances that ambulance with corresponding emergency vehicle will be here, right? Where will they park that? There's no loading zone, which is, which is for a hospital, hospital use, it is required. It's not a hotel, it's not a restaurant. It is a hospital, institutional use, I too. Okay? My third point is, the, this is not comparable to a senior living facility. This is a medical rehabilitation facility, which is a hospital. So you cannot compare that to, to a hotel, which, there is a limit on square footage to get you a loading zone. But this is a hospital. That's why we are, we are asking for a loading zone. And then, my last point is the SEQA. So there are, the staff mentioned about the minor alteration, right, for 25,000 square feet, 25,000 square feet, but there are other points in that existing facility that didn't mention. So, they are going, this is, the existing use is office. So mechanical is different mechanical system for a medical. I'm pretty sure, and I hope, that they will upgrade their medical facility to meet the mechanical code. And it is a major alteration, noise and everything, and it's medical. I'm not sure if they will provide a generator in this facility, because if you have 56 beds, full capacity, and there is outage, what are you going to do with your 56 patients? And then, where will you, you're going to bring them down? There is no place for them to gather. Where are you going to gather the 56 persons? And some of them are non-ambulatory. They cannot, if they are being treated with medication, they will be bed, on the bed, right? They will, they will bring them down to a certain place. Where will they put them? In case of emergency? Did they have this in the plan? I hope, I hope the planning commission, the planning commission will address this concern from the community, from the neighborhood. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Hello, Patrick Masih, you are on the air, and you have two minutes starting now.
Members of the commission, my name is Patrick Massey. I've been living in Glendale for over 35 years. We have multiple properties in the Planktoni neighborhood. We are against this project, period. It has no place in the neighborhood. One of the things that really disappointed me about this whole project is the fact that Mr. Kiesel is not even ready to present answers to the questions posed by commissioners, specifically Commissioner Lee. Mr. Kiesel comes to this meeting without the zoning book in his possession, and we are talking about a lot of vague areas and gray areas, and we don't know the answer to this, we don't know the answer to that. And this applicant comes from a six-bed house, homes that he has purchased in the valley, to this facility, without the experience of even running a facility with 56 beds. So there's a big discrepancy here. Am I the only one that sees this, or are you guys seeing this too? And at the same time, nobody wants to talk about the property values that are going to take a hit, and I'm very happy Mr. Hamlet actually brought this up. Yes, the property values will get hit if this property goes forward. And there's no question about it. There's a negative stigma. There's also, with two security guards, which is an absolute joke, you are not protecting the neighborhood that is surrounding this area. And by the way, if this applicant really cares about those that are addicted, why is he proposing a location that is 120 feet away from the railroad tracks, without any wall or protection? So there are a lot of questions here that need to be answered. We hope this commission will take the steps to reject this project. Eventually, this will end up in front of the city council, I guarantee it, and if it goes there, we'll also be ready. But this is not the right project for the neighborhood. And those of us that have worked hard and really believe in this neighborhood will not let our dreams fall apart because this gentleman wants to consolidate his cost, and that's his argument, and say, "Oh, a 56 facility, I can hire less people to run it." That is his main argument for this facility, period. It's all about the dollar. And guess what? We should not have to have our property values get a hit because this gentleman wants to put thousands and thousands of dollars into his pocket with this facility. It's not going to work like that. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, there's one more caller, but there's no name. Hello, you're on the air. Can you please state your name for the record? Okay, I guess.
So it looks like we don't have any more callers?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we proceed, I do have one more question, and that is, you know, what we have before us is the facility, rehab facility with 56 beds and eight, you know, the staff. Are we, you know, were to make decision on the 56-bed facility, correct? What I'm saying is that if, I don't feel comfortable with this, really, 56 beds. You know, do we have, you know, ability to look at maybe 16, 20 beds instead of 56 beds type of thing?
Well, the 56-bed facility is what they're proposing.
I really would recommend that if that's something the planning commission would like to see, that you vote to deny and have the applicant reapply for a different number of beds so that staff can properly evaluate the application.
Thank you.
Yes.
One of the callers brought two things to my attention. One, for ambulances, if someone is really, needs an ambulance, if the loading zone is under the garage, through the gate, that's not going to be very practical to ambulance to get in, especially on emergencies. So, are we going to move forward to vote?
If I could just put a couple of things on the record, just, so, Mr. Kiesel was mentioning that the zoning code doesn't have a specific definition of this specific use, but it really does, it's just a broader definition that this falls under. It's under residential congregate care, living medical. So, and that squarely fits within this definition. It's a residential use with or without private kitchens, including a common eating area, with or without onsite assistance, with activities of daily living and onsite assistance with counseling or medical care with seven or more beds. So, examples are convalescent homes, skilled nursing facilities, but it's not limited to those things. So, that requires an AUP in this zone. So that's very clear. I don't want there to be any confusion that this use is sort of being made up. It's not, it's in the zoning code. The second thing I wanted to clarify is the comment about the building code. And so, the building code process is, first, you would need to get all your zoning code, zoning approvals, such as design review, any conditional use permits of this sort. Then you would submit to plan check, and at that point, Building and Safety will make sure that the use, which is, this is going to be a change of use, I believe, it has an occupancy rating of an office use, and it will change to the appropriate use under the building code. And then, all of the requirements under the building code will have to be shown on the plans, executed, and then approved by an inspector before they receive their certificate of occupancy for this particular use. Just wanted to clarify that. And last point for SEQA, my opinion, and staff's opinion, is that this falls squarely within the Class 1 existing facilities exemption. The only time this would be bumped out of that is if there are unusual circumstances that would bump it out of this exemption. But I have not seen, and staff has not seen, more importantly, any evidence in the record that there are any unusual circumstances, SEQA circumstances, substantial impacts on the environment. So that's all I wanted to put on the record.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, as you said, you know, go through the plan check process, and then fire department will take a look at it for fire exit requirements and all that. So, all that will be, I guess, you know, squared away during that process, and then, even if he wants to have a 56 bed, he may not be able to get 56 bed during maybe plan check process.
It's possible.
Yeah, it's possible.
Theoretically, yeah.
Yeah. But anyways, so that's why I asked that question. Are we married to this? So, and then you gave me that answer, so thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have some general comments. I don't think I have any questions, but I would say, out of all the concerns laid out, some of the easier fixes, I would say, one on the security side, it shouldn't be that much of a cost to make the residents feel, you know, a little bit better about the proposal by increasing the security on-site a little bit. Maybe that'll also be addressed at some point in the process. And I guess, just to clarify, so it's conceivable that loading zone-related, I guess, plans would come out of the plan check process if we decide to move forward with this project, or is that kind of established, and we're assuming that they don't need the zone per our zoning, and then they're going to go through with that same lens when they review it?
So, as far as the zoning code requirement, my understanding from the staff report, I haven't specifically looked at this code section, but is that, you know, there isn't a specific requirement, because sometimes things aren't called out very clearly in the code, but we base it on past practice, and past practice has treated, I'm sorry, what is it? Senior living facilities as a non-goods handling use. And so, that's what staff has used to analyze whether that's required under the zoning code. Now, whether it's required under the building code is a separate question, like you said.
Nope, thank you.
I think that's it on my end.
Any other phone calls? Any comments?
We do have one other phone caller, but unless you want to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Cindy Allegio, you're on the air, please. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you for taking my call. I got cut off earlier. My name is Cindy. I've lived here in Glendale. I've been raised in Glendale for 30 years. I now don't live in Glendale, but I'm calling for my parents because they do reside, and my entire family still lives in Glendale as well. And I'm honestly concerned for their safety. I must mention that when we did find out about this project and we started talking to neighbors, a lot of people didn't know. So when we started to communicate this to them, a petition was begun, and we have over 1,766 signatures against this facility being built in their backyard. I really need to express that this needs to be studied further. It's the first time for City of Glendale to have a center like this, and it's the first time for Mr. Allen and his team to have a facility like this. So there's definitely a lot of unknown, and that's something that should be entertained, at the very least, before an approval is given. I also must state that I am a registered nurse, and so I know what type of facility this would be and what kind of patients it would have, and I know that an ambulance is going to be needed. I know medical staff is going to be needed, and it's going to be busier than what is being proposed. 56 patients is a lot to handle. Also, the nearest hospitals are 2.6 miles away for Adventist, Memorial 2.5 miles away, Providence St. Joseph is three miles away, but the nearest school is 0.6 miles away. So there's definitely something wrong. We're not being, misunderstanding or inhumane on not understanding that the facility is needed. We absolutely know there is a need. Drug and alcohol abuse is definitely a concern for everybody, but this is not the correct location. I know there is a better location for this. Like I said, safety was already a concern. It's a quiet neighborhood, it's targeted, we've already had break-ins with guns. I was already concerned for my parents' safety, but if this passes, I'm going to be even more concerned. I won't be able to sleep at night knowing that they're not going to be safe and that somebody could break in and hurt them. And like them, there's multiple neighbors here that are living a peaceful life and don't need this. So please reconsider it. Thank you.
Okay, should we move forward?
Well, I guess we can open the discussion. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm willing to go first.
Go for it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, yeah, they're still on comfort zone here for me. You know, yes, we do need rehab centers, definitely. You know, the need for this is increasing, and, you know, we do need it. As far as, you know, going by the codes and, you know, so that was all explained. So, you know, that was satisfactory. You know, I'm satisfied with the information that was given. But still, there are certain areas that are gray, that, you know, raises concerns, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable supporting this, so, project.
I'll let go of what Commissioner Lee said. So, overall, you know, I commend the applicant for, you know, taking on a worthy cause and already doing so with three separate projects. I think, you know, frankly, the appeal in this case, it would have been, you know, clearer if they had focused on the primary issues in the situation, which I think some of us addressed. I think, you know, part of, part of the problem is the scale and the leap from previous projects to this scale, and having this scale of a project with no outdoor space for the occupants of the building, I think, also is a primary concern that I had. You know, it's one thing, it's one thing to give all of these field trip opportunities, and it may not be in the immediate neighborhood, but it just seems to me like a lot of individuals indoors with windows you can't open for an extended period of time, and even if the stays aren't that long, that's a bit of the concern I had on my end. On top of that, I would have liked to see, you know, the applicant propose a stronger security presence just to add to, you know, add to the concerns of the residents in advance, or make it known that that was being taken care of. I did appreciate kind of the layout of the second floor and taking into consideration privacy a little bit more than was deemed in the appeal. But at this point in time, I also don't think I can confidently move this forward.
You know what? I'm sorry. Generally, the appellant is given some time to rebut any arguments. So, if we, if the appellant would like to speak anymore, generally, it's a two-to-three-minute rebuttal period. Appellant, would you like to speak anymore?
Can you guys hear me?
This is the, the appellant's time to speak, to rebut. That's okay.
I think, you know, a lot of the points that I tried to kind of quickly go over, some of the callers really got into detailed, details and made some good points, that I think the commission, you know, is thinking about, you know, taking a second look at a lot of it, and I appreciate that. You know, a lot of it, I think, you know, the appellant and the neighbors and the residents of Glendale can just go back and forth with the applicant on a lot of these things, but I think a lot of our concerns are big. You know, I think caller Cindy, she mentioned hospitals being so much further than the school. The safety is, is, you know, safety and privacy, which are the bigger ones for us. I think still the, the SEQA, that caller Marlo mentioned, that's still very important for us too. You know, it's a big change in use. The staff is mentioning that, you know, it does fall into the residential congregate section, but it's still something new for all of us, especially the city. And it should be, you know, looked into. And that environmental report could definitely help. The commission mentioned, again, the last thing they mentioned, which is one of the bigger things for me too, and I mentioned during the first time I spoke, is fifty-six beds nowhere to really, for them to get fresh air. And I don't think that's acceptable. If, if, I would probably feel a lot better for them if, if it was, it was in a residential home next to my house and it was six beds versus, versus a project like this. So again, thank you very much for hearing all of our points. And we're looking forward to your responses.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes, well, I, I agree with Commissioners Lee and I can't pronounce her last name, Stephen. There are a few items that need a little bit more clarification or consideration. I'm assuming, number one, although there are fifty-six patients, none of them, or maybe a few of them, really don't have a vehicle and don't drive. So, there's no issue as far as parking. Giving the community and the neighborhood a sense of security and feeling safe will be one of the top concerns for me. Maybe the applicant should look into additional security or a little bit more of safety issues. As far as building code, and I know they have to go through zoning, building, and fire to get all those necessary improvements approved. This is not a done deal if they get zoning code approval. And loading, that's also a big issue for me. I understand in case of emergencies, dropping and picking up, it is hard to go through a gated, you know, entrance or exit. But these are some of the items that I, I still don't feel comfortable, even though the staff already approved the administrative exception. And considering this is an administrative exception and not a CUP or a variance, I am still not comfortable with what we have. Maybe fifty-six is too much? Or maybe this is just not the right location? That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, Commissioner Fuentes, this is an AUP, it's like a CUP. It's not an administrative exception, just to clarify.
Yeah, correct, correction, yes, it's an AUP, thank you.
I also don't feel comfortable with the project. I think it's fifty-six. The fact that it's close to, very close to residential neighborhood, very close to the schools. And I just don't see, especially when they're coming from all over the country, all over the state or all over the county. I don't feel comfortable with this project.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make the motion if.
Okay.
Okay.
If I could just interrupt, I'm so sorry. What I'm hearing from the commissioners is that you are inclined to deny this administrative use permit based mainly on the second finding that the use and its associated structures and facilities will be detrimental to the public health or safety, the general welfare, or the environment. Are there any other? And I'm hearing because of a security guard, a security issues, I apologize, security issues, proximity to schools, issues with floating zone.
Proximity to residences.
Proximity to residences. Are there any other, one of the findings that you believe can't be made besides the second one?
Those are my two concerns. I think the zoning, they're going to have to go with the city zoning planning and all the requirements. So that's not an issue. The issue is those that you just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, and within that, the scale too, of the.
Oh, that's a good, yeah.
Fifty-six beds as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, can, I just want to mention something. Though I commend the applicant for trying to put up such type of facility which will be of help to the city and the community, it's just that maybe, like I said, this is not the right location for the project. So, but thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Trying to.
So.
Thank you.
I, I have technical question before I read this motion. Because you prepared the motion for sustain, but is this, do you say reverse or deny?
You can say either, I think reverse would be more appropriate. But if we could ask for, since staff only prepared a motion to approve, if we could continue this, the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting without further public notice, staff will come back with a motion with findings to deny the administrative use permit, reverse the planning hearing officer's decision to grant it and deny it.
Also, to postpone to the next meeting, huh?
Continue.
Continue, correct.
Okay, with the proper language.
Yes, with a motion with all of the findings, taking into account all your comments today about the findings that can't be met.
Yeah, I make the motion that the staff prepare the, the findings for reversing the planning hearing officer's decision to approve this project for the next meeting to vote on.
Okay. I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I seconded.
Okay, can the chair second? Okay, this will be a real call. Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Manassian?
Yes.
Mr. Karachian?
Yes.
And Ms. Fuentes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries four-zero, thank you.
Do we have any other agenda here?
The department does not have any updates at this meeting. And so the last item on the agenda is adjournment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.